The council design is ready and has his people, so we'll begin. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Voice. It's an honor to bring before you today members of our Los Angeles City Fire Department. If they'll please join me here. Gentlemen. On September 11th, 2001. We know what happened in New York City. And the recovery efforts that took place. Three Los Angeles City firefighters were amongst the individuals that I'm going to recognize this morning. Brave men standing before you today are known as members of the Los Angeles City Fire Department. They're also firehogs. And firehogs mean that they ride motorcycles. To honor their fallen comrades after the tragedy of September 11th. They rode on their motorcycles across this great land. Stowing tributes on behalf of the City of Los Angeles Fire Department in Oklahoma City, New York City, and at the International Fallen Firefighters Memorial in Colorado Springs, Colorado. Also countless tributes that took place simultaneously throughout the country. And the well wishes of Los Angeles were passed on to citizens throughout the land from firefighter to firefighter. And from citizen to citizen. Eight thousand two hundred miles in twenty-eight days. Eight rode those motorcycles. Now that's what we call a moving tribute. It's my honor to recognize them today. My pleasure to bestow certificates upon them for a job well done. On behalf of the City of Los Angeles. The activity received sponsorship from the American Legion Post 308. Northridge Tower Pharmacy, Wells Fargo Bank, Reseda Chamber of Commerce, United Fires of Los, United Firefighters of Los Angeles City, Local 112, Shell Oil, Teabag Custom Motorcycle Travel Bags, Galpin Ford, British Petroleum, Westfield Shopping Town, the Marriott Hotel Corporation, Laylaw Transit, Dan Gill Custom Signs, and my office. These firefighters did this on their own time. All off-duty. And three of the individuals were there for the recovery efforts. And then made the return a year later with their other firefighters who are all members of the firehogs. So I've got certificates that we are going to present to these brave heroes of our community. The first one we have for firehogs in recognition of your participation as a sponsor in the Coast to Coast Memorial Ride Honoring Fire Department New York. And we assembled at Fire Station 27. Correct? Over at Hollywood. And Tom LaBonde, I want to recognize you now that you're on the telephone. Galper Tom LaBonde and I were there for the kickoff where we had the assemblage of the local news and carried them through on that cross-country trip. Eight thousand two hundred miles on motorcycles. Mike Hammer, on behalf of the firehogs. Come on up here. You are a tribute to the Fire Department and the firehogs. And it's one in the same. Here's the logo. Los Angeles Fire Department. Dustin Clark, firefighter, Los Angeles City Fire Department. In recognition of your participation in the nine-eleven rides in New York. Is carrying people like you who make the City of Los Angeles a better place in which to live, work, and play. Dustin. Bruce Newcomb, firefighter. From the fine San Fernando Valley. John Garnisia Jr. Garnica, I know I get it right, John. Firefighter, Los Angeles City Fire Department. John Garnica. Junior, that is, John. Paul M. Hillary. Hillary. I'm getting it right. I should put my glasses on and read these. Scott B. Gill, apparatus operator, Los Angeles Fire Department. And Scott was one of the individuals who worked with me to put this whole program together. Scott, thank you. Albert, the captain. Albert C. Angulo, captain, Los Angeles City Fire Department. And Jack H. Wise, not the councilman. Jack H. Wise, captain to Los Angeles City Fire Department. Who was in charge of all the publicity across the country and who worked with the media across the country. And who helped put this together so we could recognize these firefighters today. And being the captain. It is now your turn at the microphone, Captain Jack Wise. You know what? I apologize. I didn't see you sneak up on the right side, chief. I didn't want to fail recognition. Chief Belmonte. Wait a second. You know what? There's two other. Chris Martinez and Michael Porper. Chris and Michael. Fortunately, what happened is when they did the search, they forgot about you guys. But we will make sure that you gentlemen do get searched for this. And I apologize. I didn't see you standing there because I was so focused on the words I was saying and my colleagues. But Chief Fire, Fire Chief, we were there yesterday at another event. The defibrillators, A.D. So let me have Jack, captain, talk. Who's on the chief's list, I understand. This may help. I don't know if this will help. And then we'll hear from a fire chief. Jack, the chief's going to go after you. Before him, let's hear from Councilmember LaBonde. Just wanted to say thank you, Mr. President. For Chris Martinez and Mike Porper. I was making the presentations. I would have made sure they were done, Councilman Zine. They just showed up today. That's all right. Those guys right all across the country. And Chris came out of Fire Station Four right downtown. And Mike Porper's in my neighborhood at Injun 56. So I just wanted to let you know that, Councilman. But I'm proud of all our public servants, but especially proud of our firefighters and those who I personally know and the work that they do and in the communities that they serve in. But this special extra effort there, I know. And both Chris and Michael rolled back together. And Los Angeles City Penitent, which is a local newspaper, did a colorful story on the towns that they went through and the reception that they got. And I think the most important thing, I think, out of the tragedy of September 11th is the bonding that has taken place between the communities throughout this country and the fire service and other public safety services, police, and other security. Public employees who work for the interests of the public and are there every day. I'm just proud of each and every one of you. But I'm a special proud of Chris and Michael. I want to thank you and I want to apologize for Councilman Zine's terrible miscue there. Terrible lack of communication, the Councilman Zine. And remember, these were all on their own time. All these firefighters on their own time, that twenty-eight days that they were on. What about your time and making sure they get certificates, Councilman Zine? I'm taking care of that. I promise that will be done. Captain Jack. First of all, I'd like to thank the City Council. Councilman Zine and also Tom LaBonde for sponsoring this and making sure that we got everything together and right. It was amazing feat for us. Every place that we went, we had a common bond. Not only were we motorcycle enthusiasts, but we also were firefighters. We had an outpouring of support and love from every place we stopped. For those two things and also for the two reasons, being members of the Los Angeles Brotherhood of Firefighters. The outpouring was phenomenal. Eight thousand two hundred miles in twenty-eight days was a testament to our resolve to do this and to bring it back from coast to coast. That was the people of our ride, coast to coast. We'd like to also, as representative of the firehogs, to invite you all to come to our memorial ride June 7th. And that'll be at Fire Station 27. And all of the proceeds from all of our fundraisers go to our widows and orphans fund. We'd also like to thank the support that we got from our Fire Department, organized the media events, and from especially the council offices that supported us so well and the citizens here in Los Angeles. Thank you. Fire Chief, are you a Harley man yet? He's got a Vespa, huh?
I wanted to be here. I wasn't sure originally if I could be here or not. I was with the C.A.O. in our budget hearing when I was with Mr. Fujioka. He told me all the money was here at council. So I said, well, what am I doing with the C.A.O.? Let's get over to council. I wanted to be here because this is a tremendous group on the Fire Department, the firehogs. I didn't recognize many of them here because I'm used to seeing them with their jeans and the tattoos and the headbands. And actually, that's one of the reasons I'm here is the support for this organization is great. And what I wanted to show was demonstrate our support. I don't have my jacket on today because I want to show you my tattoo, which is, as you can see here, you can see the muscles too, but you can probably see the tattoo a little better. And I've got Chief Manning, who is my new chief of staff, who wants to meet all the council people. He's got a tattoo for each of you. We're going to give you this just before budget time. No time, not yet. So we're going to give you these tattoos and they're good through the next month through the budget period. So we'll look to see them when we come here with our budget request. But again, thank you for the council's support and for the organization of firehogs. They do the ride, and this particular ride was to honor the firefighters in New York. But they have done many rides to raise money for widows and orphans and other causes on the city. And I appreciate Councilman Zine. He's out there on his party every once in a while also. And so we want to keep you all safe. And thanks again for your support.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. President, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zine. Chair recognizes Ms. Perry for our next presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to ask Mrs. Nederville and Beverly Blake to come stand up here with me for a second. And I'd also like to ask the members of the Vermont Harbor Neighborhood Council to stand up in support of their community leaders so that we can give them some recognition. They have come down today to visit City Hall and to learn more about local government. And I wanted to give you a moment just to greet them and congratulate them. I want to felicitateles, I want to salutaleles. And I asked Mrs. Nederville to come up here because she is the, while Beverly did the organizing, Mrs. Nederville is the queen of the neighborhood. That's right. And this is Vermont Harbor Neighborhood Council. And its implementer, convener, and chair, Beverly Blake, to my left. And Mrs. Nederville, I'll just ask them to say a few quick words. This Neighborhood Council in the ninth council district and beyond was certified December the 17th. And twenty of the folks are here today to show their excitement and enthusiasm and support. And so I'd like to say welcome and congratulations. Why don't we just have a quick word from Mrs. Nederville and then a hello from Beverly?
Hello, everyone. I'm very happy to be here today. And I'm sure that we are going to make well of our community council. Thank you.
I just want to tell you one word about Mrs. Nederville. She has a very large family in the ninth council district. And when I was campaigning, it needed to do my nominating petitions. I think I filled up about three pages from your relatives alone, right? That's right. That's right. Beverly Blake. Good morning. It's our pleasure to be before you today. And it's our pleasure to announce that we are the fifty-ninth Neighborhood Council certified in the City of Los Angeles. We're a very diverse neighborhood council. And we're very happy to say that all sectors of our community are represented and participate, as you can see here today. So thank you for receiving us and acknowledging us. And we look forward to working together very closely in the years to come. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, in our next presentation, I'd like to ask the young people from the Joy Picas Child Care Center to come up here and help me do this presentation. I think that's what you were planning on doing. You guys are going to come up? Come on up. Passen, pasen, por favor. You can get on television so your parents can see you later. Pónganse para que salgan en televisión y sus padres los puedan admirar y ver más después. Representatives from R.D. Systems. Sistemas R.D.C. Pasen, pasen. Come on up here. Stand right there. Yeah, so they're so little, nobody will see them behind the podium. Okay, come on, you guys. Come on up here. Okay, yeah, you can put them in front, too. You can be on TV for your parents. I'm sorry, did I surprise you guys? Okay. Here, come back over here. Okay. Is that everybody? Okay, now the adults, please, stand in the background. Okay, all right. It's okay. Say hi to your mom and dad. Saluden a su mamá y a su papá. Saluden a su mamá y a su papá. Okay, this looks good. Our general manager of General Services is a hands-on general manager, helping to arrange the children for their shock. I just want to say that this is really, really very sweet. I'm glad that all of you came over today to share in this recognition because you're our most precious resource. After the terrorist attacks in New York and D.C., on September 11th, all cities around our country looked at their city infrastructure to try to figure out ways to give better protection to people in and out of the buildings. And our city took a look, a long, hard look at the security and the emergency systems, and decided to change and revamp them to better meet the needs of everyone. And most especially, these children, the children here who are in our childcare centers. The Joy Picas Childcare Center is housed in City Hall South and is a very important part of our civic center because we can provide good care for all these kids here in front of us on a daily basis. So their parents can go to work with some peace of mind knowing that their children are well cared for. To meet this need, the Department of General Services, in conjunction with a consultant, Tri E.C. and R.D. Systems, a contractor integrator, reassessed the security needs of several facilities in the civic center. The team worked closely with the staff at the Joy Picas Childcare Center to identify its security needs. Tri E.C. provided pro bono engineering services. And R.D. Systems donated new state-of-the-art technology and installation services. All in all, approximately thirty thousand in professional services were donated to the City of Los Angeles and to the kids here at the Joy Picas Center. And for that, I think we should give them a big hand. And for this, I'd like to give them a big hand. And for this, I'd like to give them a big hand. Now, today, the center has four full-color cameras, a new access control system. And it has been seamlessly integrated into the GSD security system. GSD Security Systems Division officers can now monitor the childcare center quickly and respond to any calls for service. This provides a greater level of security for the kids, a peace of mind for the parents, and for all of us here in the city. This project represents yet another example of the benefits of the city establishing a public-private partnership in its efforts to respond to security needs that were raised in the wake of this attack. And I just wanted to take time today to recognize extraordinary generosity of both of these private security organizations. That's TRC, EZ, ESI, and R.D. Systems. Thank you. And I also want to thank John and the men and the women at GSD, General Services Department, who worked with these two private operators to make this project possible. And I think that their dedication should be recognized and commended. Thank you. And I'd like to present the certificate to Representative from R.D. Systems. And a certificate to TRC. A certificate to TRC. Thank you very much. And I'll give you the rest of those in the back. Make sure I didn't miss anybody. I'm fine. Just want to make sure I didn't miss anybody. And John, maybe you'd like to say a few quick words or one of the reps to say what this means to you. All right, Tony, you get in there.
Thank you very much. City Councilman Jan Perry and the rest of the members of the City Council. I'd like to join with you in our appreciation for the great work of R.D. Systems and TRC, EASI. These two companies have provided us outstanding security service over the last couple of years. Really helped the city come a long way in the last couple of years. And it's just great that they've been able to donate a little bit of their time and their materials to help all children to help our future. So on behalf of them and also on behalf of the General Services Department, we'd like to present you, Ms. Perry, with this certificate of our appreciation for your support.
Muchas gracias. Thank you very much. This is nice. This is muy lindo. Thanks, everyone. Okay, everybody go that way. Okay, follow Ava. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry, for those presentations. Members, I see ten of us listed on the roster, bringing us to a quorum. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Burnson, Galanter, Garcetti, Grohl, Han, Holden, LaBonde, Mr. Casco, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, White, Sign, Padilla, ten members present in the form, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. Members, before continuing with presentations, I'm going to make two announcements. One is what I'd like to do next is go through the agenda and dispense with consent items. But even before doing that, let me introduce a special guest who's with us in council chambers, standing next to Councilmember Jack Wise. Please welcome one of our newest Assembly Representatives in the City of Los Angeles, Assembly Member Lloyd Levine from the Fortieth District in the San Fernando Valley. Welcome to council chambers. Madam Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Wise moves, and Mr. LaBonde seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Grohl moves, and Mr. Pacheco seconds.
On the regular, gentlemen, Mr. President, item number one is an item notice for public hearing. And I believe there's a request from Councilmember Perry to continue that to Tuesday, which is January 28th.
Okay, members, the request to continue, item number one, to the 29th of January is an objection. Seeing none, item one is continued. Next item?
Next items are items which public hearings have been held. Items two through four, item four, Planning Line Use Management Committee Report has been submitted and distributed to all the council members.
Two through four now before us. Public hearings haven't been held in committee of motion. Would be required to reopen the public hearings. And seeing no such motion, are there any specials? Members wishing to call any specials? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Items two through four. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Item four is approved. Items two and three being ordinances carry over for a second reading. Next items, please.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items five through 10.
Items five through 10 now before us. And seeing no requests from members of the public to adjust the council on these matters which shall be the public's hearing satisfied. Members wishing to call any specials, beginning with Mr. Wise.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to send item eight to Mr. Garcetti's committee.
Members requesting to refer item number eight to the Economic Development and Employment Committee. Is there any objection? Seeing none, item eight is so referred. Next, any other specials? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote. Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are the closed session items. And I believe there's a request to continue item number 12 to February 7th.
We received a request to continue item number 12 for two weeks, February 7th. Seeing no objection, item 12 is continued. We'll hold item 11, the closed session item on the desk. And return at this point to presentations. Chair recognizes Councilmember LaBonde. Mr. President, members of council. Vitra on, our city engineer is joining me because Raquel Barault is retiring after over thirty-plus years of service to the people of Los Angeles in the Bureau of Engineering. As many years, the executive secretary for the city engineer, a very, very important role. And Councilman Burnson, who has worked closely, as I and others, with your Bureau of Engineering, wanted to salute Raquel on her years of service. She was born in the Philippines and attended high school and university there. And earned a bachelor's degree in business administration. She worked for the Army and Air Force Exchange System at Clark Air Force Base before immigrating to the United States, just about thirty-two years ago in 1971. Raquel came to the City of Los Angeles on June 5th, 1972, as a clerk typist with the Bureau of Contract Administration. And promoted to senior clerk typist with the Police Department. Then transferred to the Harbor Department as the secretary, the director of trade and development in that division. Finally, she came back up to Harbor Freeway in 1975 to start working with the Valley Engineering Office in the East Valley. Along the way, she served several different functions within the Bureau of Engineering and always having the time and the creative skills to take the challenge of the incoming calls and make sure people got responded to and their information necessary to complete the task at hand. After her retirement, she plans to enjoy and take care of her family and at the same time help her husband in the private practices of accounting. Because she learned a lot of things here working for the City of Los Angeles. She's been married to her husband, Sergio.
She's been married to her husband Sergio for over 38 years, they have one daughter, two sons, and two grandsons in their beautiful family. So now for my adoptionist resolution, it's my honor on behalf of the city council, Councilmember Hal Burnson, as well as Ruth Calanter, and our president Alex Padilla, salute you, Raquel, for all your great work to the city of Los Angeles as an executive assistant, executive secretary in the Bureau of Engineering. Let's have a big hand for Raquel. Thank you very much. Come here, take the picture here. Get in here. Get in here. Get in here. You're tall. Wait a second, Ronnie. We'll move into the second. She's worked for over four city engineers, and the current city engineer, Vitroyan, is going to say a few words on behalf of that distinguished body before we call on Raquel. Thank you, Councilman Labange. Those of you who have executive secretaries know that they function as your right arm, and Raquel's knowledge of the city and of the people in her legendary, and her commitment to customer service exceeds anybody's expectations. She's been a great help to me and will be very, very much missed. Raquel, I hope you enjoy your retirement.
Raquel, would you like to remark on your retirement? Honorable Council President Alex Padilla, and honorable members of the council. Thank you very much for your friendship and also understanding while I was working in the Bureau of Engineering. Thank you, Tam Labange, for all the help. I have known you for a number of years, and we have been friends. It is really a great opportunity working for the city. Thanks.
Salama! Also, Mr. President, members, if I could here, you betcha, Vit. I'd like to ask the city champions to come right up here right now from Pan Pacific Park. You know, Mr. President, members, this week is Super Bowl weekend, and the Oakland Raiders and the Tampa Bay Buccaneers will battle it out in the beautiful city of San Diego. I know it's the hope of some that we have professional football here in Los Angeles, but truly, the most important thing of any sport and activity is our playgrounds and our parks, and we certainly have the Super Bowl champion of city major football here today from Pan Pacific. We also have their director, Serena First. Serena, good to see you come up here, Serena, right now, because every good park has to have a great director. And Jerry Tabers, who's the recreation coordinator, who works in conjunction with the director. And Pan Pacific is one of the most exciting places because the new gymnasium has just really excited a lot of the things, but this is not new. We have reigning champions because they were citywide champions last year in the minor division. I want to salute their coaches, Anthony Callhouse, is that correct? Cartu, excuse me. Where's Anthony? Coach, make me do some push-ups for that mezquill there on your name. I'm sorry, Coach. Okay, and I always see Reggie Turner, who's a great coach, everywhere right there, and also we have, is this Ernie Singleton? Ernie, good job, Ernie. Where'd you go to high school? Santa Monica High School. Alright, good to see you. Now, all this talent right here, but there's someone very special to this team, and I'm going to introduce the team in a moment, is the coordinator, it's the parents behind. We have someone who's extremely special because she is also a city attorney and an employee of the city of Los Angeles, Carmen Hawkins. And where are you, Carmen? Shy as you are, get up here, Carmen, which is great. Now, I'm going to start there with the quarterback, Darius Singletary. Where is Darius? Right up here.
Darius Singletary?
Darius, the quarterback of this team, and he's led the effort. You're almost as big as the great quarterback, Aaron McNair. Who's your favorite quarterback? Donovan McNabb, Philadelphia Eagles, Andy Reid, head coach, John Marshall High, well, anyway. We're going to see you, we wanted to have you have this ball here, and I want you to tell us a little about your team as quarterback. I know we have the center right here, because nothing starts without the center getting the ball first to the quarterback. What's your name? Evan? Len Norris, good to see you. I want to hear from the quarterback, which is Singletary right here.
Well, we couldn't do it without my team and the coaches.
No, we could do this without the team and without the coaches.
And the important thing for a quarterback to know is he has to explain what the play is and call that play. And he shows the leadership. He shows the leadership to move these young men down the field and score. It was a rainy, muddy field when he won this championship. I'm sorry, I couldn't be there against Cheviot Hills. But let me call also some members, Jason Beach, is that correct there? Okay, Justin Hawkins.
Justin Hawkins.
EJ Singleton.
EJ Singleton.
Oscar Belfield.
Oscar Belfield.
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 Dennis Dickey.
Dennis Dickey.
Matthew Holtz.
Matthew Holtz.
Evan Norris, the center. Doesn't start without the center.
Center.
Bijon Smith.
Bijon Smith.
Ryan Benedicto.
Ryan Benedicto.
Terry Beasley.
Jared Dubois.
Jared Dubois. Christopher Hortmus.
Christopher Hortmus.
Horstman? Excuse me, Christopher.
Disculpa, Christopher.
Kason Leslie, the championship Pan Pacific Los Angeles citywide major division football team, and I call the Super Bowl champs of Los Angeles this year.
Los campeones de los Angeles, el gran razón de Los Ángeles, el equipo Pan Pacific.
So Coach Singleton, if you could come back up here right now, and also Coach...
Entrenador Singleton, pase para acá, por favor, también entrenador.
Cartus and Coach Turner. It's the coaches that make things happen. And I mentioned as Darius was speaking about his favorite player Donovan McNabb, Donovan's coach is Andy Reid. Andy Reid was a bar boy about as big as you are in the sixth grade, in a Pop Warner uniform standing in the middle of Monon Street in 1970, catching our footballs from our high school, John Marshall, from what was then future Hall of Famer Mike Haynes, the great Raider. So it's funny. So one day you work hard, you do well in school, very important to do well in school, to listen to your parents and to your neighbors and your great coaches, and you'll all have success. To the coaches, to all the players, on behalf of the city council, on behalf of the recreation department that runs this program, we salute you and we want you all to have a certificate on this day, as we salute the champions, Pan Pacific, citywide major division football players. Thank you all very much. Okay, thank you.
Muchas gracias.
I'm the rec coordinator at Pan Pacific. I just want, we got a young man here that we're going to present something to Mr. Labange here, Councilman Labange. And this young man, I always say, he was too smart to play on the football team, and I'm going to explain that. He was supposed to be on the football team, but he skipped the grade, went all the way to the ninth grade, became varsity, junior varsity player at Crenshaw High School, so that made him ineligible to play for us at the park. Was a tremendous young man, so I always say, you're just too smart to be playing here. So I got this young man here, Kason Leslie.
We'd like to make you an honorary coach, and we'd like to thank you for letting us come down here and acknowledge us.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Camisete, queremos hacerle y nombrarle, entrenador honorario de nuestro equipo.
Alright, first thing, an honorary coach, let's have a huddle right here, let's run a 327Y on two. Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Let's all go in the back room. Thank you very much for that. Good luck in football. That's good. Yeah, we're going to back take a team shot. Thank you, Burnson. You betcha. Come on, kid. Excuse me, I'll get your better handshake in a moment.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Let me, oh, let me recognize Mr. Garcetti.
Muchas gracias, señor Labange. Queremos hablar con el señor Garcetti. Conocer al señor Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti's microphone.
We could reconsider item four, it just to be one recorded as a no vote, and I went on consent.
I believe item four was continued.
Oh, was it continued?
Oh, no, item four was adopted, I'm sorry.
Yeah, if we could just reconsider to record me as a no vote, please.
Alright, if there's no objection, we will allow item four to be reconsidered so that Mr. Garcetti can register a no vote on the matter. That would be the order. Let me now call on Councilmember Nick Pacheco for a presentation.
Madam President, colleagues, it's a great pleasure to stand before you with a gentleman, an artist who has been a great contributor, not only personally, but in terms of also being a mentor and role model for many of our youth in northeast of Los Angeles and the east side specifically. Leo Limón is one of our artists here in the city of Los Angeles. He's earned recognition and accolades from his peers in college throughout the professional world. He's enjoyed widespread popularity in the community. He has been an arts ambassador for East Los Angeles and the Chicano community. He's always worked closely with our neighborhoods and specifically has worked very closely with the Ali River. In the early years, he was very influential and involved with the art group Los Four, worked with Carlos Almaraz, the Chicano Art Center, Plaza de la Raza, and Centro de Arte Público. While at South Health Graphics, he was involved in developing several important programs, including the annual Dia de los Muertos. The light sister Karen Bocalello allowed him to open the silk screen print shop, which evolved into the well-known Atidad Printmaking Program. His fine art silk screen prints have been exhibited nationally and internationally. Leo assisted with the coordination of various projects, including the Ali River Cat Restoration and Recreation Project during his co-directorship at the Aslan Cultural Arts Foundation. He is often referred to as the Cat Man for his work along the Ali River. He's currently a group facilitator with the National Latino Fatherhood and Family Institute, mentoring young Chicanos. He's been involved in a number of groups and efforts to revive Los Angeles' river as a historic region, cultural arts, and club, and play, and tourist destination. Leo's life, work, and impact today have left a positive legacy, not only upon the local community and culture, but also the art world in general. He's one of the most distinguished mid-career artists of the Chicano art movement. We recognize him today, and would like the city to support as many great ideas and concepts however we can. As many of you know, the Ali River is a huge part of our revitalization of Los Angeles, and as you know, the 14th Constitution has a huge portion of the Los Angeles River in the downtown area. So we want to commend Leo, the Cat Man, Leo, for his efforts in the river, for his efforts in the Chicano art movement, and finally for his efforts of being a group facilitator with the National Latino Fatherhood and Family Institute. So this certificate of appreciation is hereby presented to Leo the Cat Man Limón for your tireless efforts and commitment toward mentoring our youth and beautifying our communities through art. You are a true leader and a role model. Best wishes and success on your many projects and visions. Congratulations, Leo. Muchas gracias. I just want to thank the council very much. I hope that someday you can all get into the river, put your foot in the river, get your feet wet, and then hopefully turn into a tourist trap for the rest of the world. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Madam Clerk, what is the next order? This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda. No public cards were submitted, but now is the time for anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on matters that are not on our agenda. Seeing no one come forward, we will close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, Madam President, do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session then? Council has motions for posting and referral. They are posted. There are excuses on the desk. Council President Pidi requests to be excused Wednesday, January 29th for city business. That motion is required. Ms. Perry moves, Mr. Weiss seconds. Councilmember Burnson requests to be excused Tuesday, April 8th, and Wednesday, April 9th for city business. That meets council policy. Mr. Burnson is excused. Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused on Friday, January 31st, till leave at 11:30. Friday, May 16th, and motion is required on the 31st. Excuse, and those both for city business. Ms. Sign moves, Ms. Calanter seconds. Mr. Garcetti is excused on the 31st. Councilmember Garcetti also requests to be excused Wednesday, March 5th, for city business. That meets council policy. Mr. Garcetti is excused on that date. Council President Pidi also requests to be excused Friday, February 21st and 28th to leave at 11:30 for city business. Those both meet council policy. Mr. Padilla is excused. And Councilwoman Perry requests to be excused Tuesday, February 4th, Wednesday, the 5th, and Friday, the 7th, for vacation, and those both, those all meet council policy. Ms. Perry is excused on those dates. And that clears the desk for closed session. Alright, if the clerk, if the sergeant could help us clear the chambers so we can go into closed session. Any members of the city staff who need to be here, please stay, and all others need to vacate the chambers. Alright, the council's back in session. I believe there's a special motion that's being distributed, Madam President, and it's presented by Councilmember Grul, and the city attorney will explain the need for the findings. Alright, I've just signed it, so why doesn't the city attorney present their findings?
Thank you, Ms. President. I will read into the record the findings for your consideration. On January 2nd, 2003, a family of five's rental unit at 10134 Monfair Avenue was destroyed by fire. The family temporarily has been housed by the American Red Cross. The Housing Department has determined that the tenant is eligible to receive calamity-based displacement tenant relocation assistance funds pursuant to the government code. Findings must be made. There is a need to take immediate action on this matter, and the need for action came to the attention of council after the posting of the agenda for today's council meeting. If such a finding is made, the department requests that council authorize the disbursement of such funds.
Alright, members, we have heard the findings as explained by the city attorney. Open the roll on the findings of the matter. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Eleven ayes. Alright, that matter is now before us. I think it's, Ms. Grul?
Yes, this is just an item where an individual, we're doing relocation assistance and the urgent nature of it, so appreciate an aye vote on this item.
Alright, the matter is before us, as recommended, to allow the relocation assistance to be given. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Eleven ayes. That matter is approved. We'll send that forthwith. And that clears the desk, Madam President. Alright, the desk is now clear. Are there announcements? Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, this Sunday, after you watch the Super Bowl, I hope you will stay tuned to ABC, Channel 7, and you will see the premiere of The Jimmy Kimmel Show, the first time in a long time we've had live television late night, but it'll be broadcast live from Hollywood, usually during the week, but the premiere is going to be on Sunday night. It's a wonderful thing. There's an internship program with Hollywood High School, and at the Masonic Building just next to the El Capitan, we will have Jimmy Kimmel competing on ABC with Leno and Letterman live from Los Angeles, the city of Los Angeles, not Burbank, every single night, so tune in.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Mr. Padilla?
Madam Chair, I believe Councilmember Grul has an announcement today.
Really? You can go ahead and tell, you can go ahead and announce it. Come on, Alex. Embarrass me in front of everyone. Well, we're going to have the first child in City Hall since Gloria Molina, almost 18 years ago, and proud to be able to say that my husband and I are going to have a wonderful baby boy, so congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Alright, are there any other announcements? If not, any...
I have an announcement. Councilmember Han's smiling, I wonder if you have an announcement? You are the other wise woman.
Alright.
I would just, is it announcements?
Announcements.
Yeah, I wish everybody well on the weekend. It's a great festive weekend for Super Bowl, a lot of family, a lot of pic tics, a lot of fun, and to be safe. of fun, and to be safe when you have a party and do the sensible thing and enjoy, and may the best team win with the best defense. And if both defenses are equal, the team with the best kicking game will win. Thank you.
Thank you for that analysis, Mr. Labange. Now is the time for adjourning motions. Could the council please come to order for adjourning tributes? Let me recognize Councilwoman Glanter.
Thank you. It's been a rough week for the arts. I'd like to ask that the council adjourn in memory of Bill Malden, who probably did more to chronicle the history of World War II than all the historians and all the hundreds of thousands of words that have been written. Bill Malden's cartoons, which of course went on for decades, chronicled a lot of things about American history, but of course, he's best known and remembered for Willie and Joe, the two regular guys. And as we, especially as we're contemplating the possibility of a lot of regular guys and gals having to go off to war again, I think it's important to remember and acknowledge that Bill Malden was really a wonderful artist and a wonderful distiller of so much of American culture and is going to be very much missed. He survived by his wife and I believe seven children.
Thank you. Other tributes? Ms. Zine? All right, then, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you. Council is adjourned.
...for you with the gentleman, an artist who has been a great contributor not only personally, but in terms of also being a mentor and role model for many of our youth on northeast Los Angeles and the east side, specifically. Leo Limón is one of our artists here in the city of Los Angeles. He's earned recognition and accolades from his peers and colleagues throughout the professional world. He's enjoyed widespread popularity in the community. He has been an arts ambassador for East Los Angeles and the Chicano community. He's always worked closely with our neighborhoods and specifically has worked very closely with the LA River. In the early years, he was very influential and involved with the art group Los Four, worked with Carlos Almaraz, the Mexican Art Center, Plaza de la Raza, and Centro de Arte Público. While at South Health Graphics, he was involved in the development of several important programs, including the annual Dia de los Muertos. The late sister Karen Bocalello allowed him to open the silk screen print shop, which evolved into the well-known Atidad Printmaking Program. His fine art silk screen prints have been exhibited nationally and internationally. Leo assisted with the coordination of various projects, including the Alley River Cat Restoration and Recreation Project during his co-directorship at the Aslan Cultural Arts Foundation. He is often referred to as the Cat Man for his work along the Alley River. He is currently a group facilitator with the National Latino Fatherhood and Family Institute, mentoring young Chicanos. He's been involved in a number of groups and efforts to revive Los Angeles' river as a historic region, cultural arts enclave, and tourist destination. Leo's life, work, and impact to date have left a positive legacy, not only upon the local community and culture, but also the art world in general. He's one of the most distinguished mid-career artists of the Chicano art movement. We recognize him today and would like the city to support his many great ideas and concepts however we can. As many of you know, the Alley River is a huge part of our revitalization of Los Angeles. And as you know, the 14th Constitution has a huge portion of the Los Angeles River in the downtown area. So we want to commend Leo, the Cat Man Limón, for his efforts in the River, for his efforts in the Chicano art movement, and finally for his efforts of being a group facilitator with the National Latino Fatherhood and Family Institute. So this certificate of appreciation is hereby presented to Leo the Cat Man Limón for your tireless efforts and commitment toward mentoring our youth and beautifying our communities through art. You are a true leader and a role model. Best wishes and success on your many projects and visions. Congratulations, Leo.
I just want to thank the council very much. I hope that someday you can all get into the river, put your foot in the river, get your feet wet, and then hopefully turn into a tourist trap for the rest of the world. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Madam Clerk, what is the next order? This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda. No public cards were submitted, but now is the time for anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on matters that are not on our agenda. Seeing no one come forward, we will close the public hearing.
Madam Clerk, Madam President, do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session then?
Yes.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted.
There are excuses on the desk. Council President Pidi requests to be excused Wednesday, January 29th, for city business. That motion is required.
Ms. Perry moves. Mr. Weiss seconds.
Councilmember Bernsen requests to be excused Tuesday, April 8th and Wednesday, April 9th, for city business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Bernsen is excused.
Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused on Friday, January 31st, till leave at 11:30. Friday, May 16th, and a motion is required on the 31st excuse, and those both for city business.
Ms. Zine moves. Ms. Glanter seconds.
Mr. Garcetti is excused on the 31st. Councilmember Garcetti also requests to be excused Wednesday, March 5th, for city business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Garcetti is excused on that date.
Council President Pidi also requests to be excused Friday, February 21st, and leave at 11:30 for city business. Those both meet council policy.
Mr. Padilla is excused.
And Councilwoman Perry requests to be excused Tuesday, February 4th, Wednesday, the 5th, and Friday, the 7th, for vacation, and those both, those all meet council policy.
Ms. Perry is excused on those days.
And that clears the desk for closed session.
All right, if the clerk, if the sergeant could help us clear the chambers so we can go into closed session. Any members of the city staff who need to be here, please stay, and all others need to vacate the chambers. All right, the council's back in session.
I believe there's a special motion that's being distributed, Madam President, and it's presented by Councilmember Gruel, and the city attorney will explain the need for the findings.
All right, I've just signed it, so why doesn't the city attorney present their findings?
Thank you, Ms. President. I will read into the record the findings for your consideration. On January 2nd, 2003, a family of five's rental unit at 10134 Montfair Avenue was destroyed by fire. The family temporarily has been housed by the American Red Cross. The Housing Department has determined that the tenant is eligible to receive calamity-based displaced tenant relocation assistance funds pursuant to the government code. Findings must be made. There is a need to take immediate action on this matter, and the need for action came to the attention of council after the posting of the agenda for today's council meeting. If such a finding is made, the department requests that council authorize the disbursement of such funds.
All right, members, we have heard the findings as explained by the city attorney. Open the roll on the findings of the matter. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right, that matter is now before us. I think it's Ms. Gruel.
Yes, this is just an item where an individual, we're doing relocation assistance and the urgent nature of it, so appreciate an aye vote on this item.
All right, the matter is before us. As recommended, to allow the relocation assistance to be given. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That matter is approved. We'll send that forthwith.
And that clears the desk, Madam President.
All right, the desk is now clear. Are there announcements? Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, this Sunday, after you watch the Super Bowl, I hope you will stay tuned to ABC, Channel 7, and you will see the premiere of The Jimmy Kimmel Show. The first time in a long time we've had live television late night, but it'll be broadcast live from Hollywood, usually during the week, but the premiere is going to be on Sunday night. It's a wonderful thing. There's an internship program with Hollywood High School, and at the Masonic Building just next to the El Capitan, we will have Jimmy Kimmel competing on ABC with Leno and Letterman live from Los Angeles, the city of Los Angeles, not Burbank, every single night, so tune in.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Mr. Padilla.
Madam Chair, I believe Councilmember Gruel has an announcement today.
Really? You can go ahead and tell. You can go ahead and announce it. Come on, Alex. Embarrass me in front of everyone. Well, we're going to have the first child in City Hall since Gloria Melina almost 18 years ago, and proud to be able to say that my husband and I are going to have a wonderful baby boy, so congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other announcements? If not, any...
I have an announcement. Councilmember Hahn's smiling. I wonder if you have an announcement? You are the other wise woman.
All right.
I would just, is it announcements?
Announcements.
Yeah, I wish everybody well on the weekend. It's a great festive weekend for Super Bowl, a lot of family, a lot of pic tics, a lot of fun, and to be safe when you have a party and do the sensible thing and enjoy, and may the best team win with the best defense. And if both defenses are equal, the team with the best kicking game will win. Thank you.
Thank you for that analysis, Mr. Labange. Now is the time for adjourning motions. Could the council please come to order for adjourning tributes? Let me recognize Councilwoman Glanter.
Thank you. It's been a rough week for the arts. I'd like to ask that the council adjourn in memory of Bill Malden, who probably did more to chronicle the history of World War II than all the historians and all the hundreds of thousands of words that have been written. Bill Malden's cartoons, which of course went on for decades, chronicled a lot of things about American history, but of course, he's best known and remembered for Willie and Joe, the two regular guys. And as we, especially as we're contemplating the possibility of a lot of regular guys and gals having to go off to war again, I think it's important to remember and acknowledge that Bill Malden was really a wonderful artist and a wonderful distiller of so much of American culture and is going to be very much missed. He survived by his wife and I believe seven children.
Thank you. Other tributes? Ms. Zine? All right, then, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you. Council is adjourned.
You are watching LA City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.